All right, I'm going to call to order this work session for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's May 29th. All three commissioners are present in the Net U Hill Room. We will begin with Ms. Thetonia.
I saw her.
She's in the back.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone.
I can't get the mic low enough.
We'll get you a box to stand on.
All right, so I am presenting to you the rewrite of our Stormwater Management Ordinance. I am going to share my screen and have a presentation for you.
She'll be right back.
Wait a second if you'd like.
You can go ahead and start. She's just grabbing her glasses.
Okay. So I'm here to present in this work session our rewrite of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. This was initiated first by my predecessor Terry Quillman in 2018, and it's been in process ever since. And the main reason for my delay is that in 2021, the state passed new stormwater regulations that would require us to update our ordinances anyway. So we took the extra time to make sure those were incorporated and passed this before our state deadline. So in this presentation, I will give you a background on the ordinance, how Chapter 761 came about, and all the changes over the years. I'm going to go through the structure of Chapter 761 and its supporting documents. And then we'll go section by section through the ordinance. And I can take as much time or as little as needed to go through those sections and then have a little, just one slide to discuss implementation, what that will look like. So Monroe County Code, Chapter 761, is our Monroe County Drainage Code, also known as the Stormwater Management Ordinance. It was originally adopted in 1997. And it was at that point called the Storm Drainage, Erosion, and Sediment Control Ordinance of Monroe County. And it governed the control of stormwater runoff to protect, conserve, and promote the orderly development of land in Monroe County and its water resources. It was primarily targeted at stormwater discharge quantity, and it had some erosion and sediment control provisions in it. Two years later, in 1999, the Indian General Assembly enacted regulations requiring all Indiana counties to establish policies like this, so we were ahead of things. Also, in that time, the Monroe County Drainage Board is also formed under Chapter 760 to help implement Chapter 761. So that happened all at the same time. In 1999, we also had Phase 2 of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDAS Permit Program, published in the Federal Register. This was authorized by the 1972 Amendments to the Clean Water Act. Basically, EPA delegates authority to IDAM. And then IDAM passes general rules and regulations for local governments. And in the case of municipal separate storm sewer systems, or MS4s, they delegate the authority to regulate erosion and sediment control at the local level. So we updated our ordinance to comply with the new construction stormwater regulations and MS4 regulations around this time. At some point, what was that? For the exact date? 2004 and 2011. We also incorporated the construction stormwater regulations into the Monroe County Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 816, in 2004. That's relevant because all this time, we've been permitting construction sites through Chapter 816. And stormwater staff have been heavily involved with that and worked with planning very closely, in particular, on cases for enforcement. And that process will be changing, as I'll describe. So we've been operating this way since, you know, 2011 or so. In 2018, the stormwater program, under Terry Quillman, contracted with Christopher Burke Engineering to rewrite Chapter 761. It hadn't had a major overhaul in a very long time. And there were, a lot has evolved over the past 20 years in drainage design. In particular, how can we not just offset new development, but how can we better protect downstream areas? So that's what really spurred the 2018 rewrite, that whole discussion starting. And Terry Quillman retired at the end of 2021, I'm sorry, at the end of 2020, and I began January 2021. Took this on and saw that in December of 2021, the state passed a new regulations requiring us to update our ordinances. So we've spent the past couple of years finishing up everything, polishing it, and incorporating the new state requirements. So here we are with a completely rewritten Chapter 761. In general, Chapter 761, it has an ordinance component that you have in front of you. It also references several exhibits. So I want to give you a big overview of all the regulations involved here. The ordinance itself governs illicit discharges, or legal dumping, development standards for land disturbing activities or new developments in the county, and has permitting requirements and enforcement. It references Exhibit 1, which is the Technical Standards Manual. This is a 130-ish page technical document that describes how to design stormwater infrastructure. And this is what our local engineers will reference when they're designing projects in our county. It also has stormwater management standards, stormwater quality standards. So how do we treat runoff from any construction site, as well as long-term pollutants from different land uses? And it also includes a 300-page appendix listing different best management practices. Every single BNP has a fact sheet on what it does and why, and how to construct it, and all these different considerations. So I thank Christopher Burke Engineering tremendously for all these resources and helping us tailor it to our county. And we really could not have done this without them. It's a lot of information. Exhibit 2 is the Construction Specifications. So that is a document explaining to our local contractors, or whoever's working in our county, how to install storm sewers and stormwater infrastructure in Monroe County. We already have these regulations in the current Chapter 761. And they're already very robust and have set a standard locally for a long time. CBU had mirrored a lot of what we had in their current construction specifications. So I took what we currently had in Chapter 761 and just packaged it up differently. But it's essentially a lot of the same content. And I've just updated some things that I found CBU had updated over the years, and some things that I found that are pretty standard nowadays to include in those. So that is another major exhibit that we created for this. There are two more exhibits, but those aren't documents we created, but they're documents that will be incorporated into the ordinance as guidance. I will go into that in a minute. So the ordinance itself, again, completely rewritten from the current Chapter 761. So completely new table of contents, setup, and organization of all the information. The first section, general information. The second section is our illicit discharge ordinance. That's currently Chapter 767. Chapter 767 will be repealed with the passage of this ordinance because all those regulations are going to be grouped into the same ordinance now. They won't be separated. Section 3 is pollution prevention for land disturbing activities. Section 4 is pollution prevention for silvicultural activities. That is broken out because we wanted to treat silvicultural activities, not so much differently, but in a very clear way. So that anyone doing logging operations, commercial timber harvesting in the county, knows exactly what section they need to look at in this ordinance and what applies to them or doesn't. Section 5 is our stormwater quantity. So good chunk of that drainage code. And post-construction stormwater quality management. So anyone developing in the county knows what's expected if they have potential pollutants on their site for their land use, if it's commercial or industrial. All those regulations are there. We have a section on drainage easements. A section on CARST and sinkhole management. This will be complementary to any CARST regulations in the county's development ordinance. Section 8 is our stormwater permit requirements procedures. This is completely new. We haven't issued a stormwater permit before in the county. It will be very similar to the county's grading permit as we currently use it. Section 9, compliance and enforcement. This is applicable to any violations of the ordinance, illicit discharges, construction site violations, drainage easement violations. Section 10 is abbreviations and definitions. There are also abbreviations and definitions in the Stormwater Technical Standards Manual. Those are much more lengthy and technical, but the ones in the ordinance apply to the ordinance for the general public to be able to read and understand and interpret the ordinance. The four exhibits, I briefly described. Exhibit 1, the Technical Standards Manual. Exhibit 2, Construction Specifications. Exhibit 3 is the Indiana Stormwater Quality Manual because they provide specifications for certain best management practices we require on construction sites. Exhibit 4 is a DNR Forestry Best Management Practices Field Guide, or BNP Field Guide. And that document was recently overhauled in 2022, and it's very comprehensive. And that's something that we will require logging companies to use, to comply with. The BNP is in that manual when they're conducting timber harvesting operations in the county. Okay, so general purpose of the ordinance, to promote health and safety and general welfare of our citizens. This carries over from why we created Chapter 761 in the first place in the 90s, to protect our environment, our downstream neighbors, and our very sensitive natural resources. The applicability of this ordinance is large in scope, in part because we're regulating non-stormwater discharges, like illegal dumping, also non-point source discharges, or some of those discharges we find across the landscape that are a little bit harder to define. So land disturbing activities, anything, basically if you're disturbing ground in the county, we will probably, you will be subject to this ordinance. And anything that has the potential to impact water resources, floodplains, sinkholes, wetlands, steep slopes, anything that is deemed a sensitive area, which is defined in the ordinance. So there are very few exemptions to the ordinance. Mostly, if you already have an NPDAS permit to discharge wastewater, processed water into a stream in the county, you have to follow those. As long as you're following your permit requirements, you're okay. So if someone has an industrial stormwater permit from the state or EPA, then they don't have to follow our rules as long as they're in compliance with their permits. We don't regulate those. Illicit discharge regulations, this is, again, Chapter 767 currently. This is required by the state for us to have this ordinance in place. So we prohibit illegal dumping. Anything that's not stormwater entering the storm sewer system or local waterways, we can enforce issuing fines and penalties. And so this can include someone directly dumping into a drain if we have evidence that they did that. Or if we find that they have an illegal connection. So if you're connecting gray water discharge to the storm sewer system, that is also enforceable under this ordinance. We have spill response procedures. So if we have a spill on a roadway near a storm drain, it enters a waterway. We have local procedures and also references state and federal regulations as well, depending on the discharge and the quantity. So anytime there's a spill in the county, contact our program so that we can do our necessary documentation and follow up, make sure that everything gets cleaned up properly. We also have the ability to access private property for inspection and water quality monitoring. This, I mean, if we suspect an illicit discharge, of course, if someone were to say we cannot enter their property, but we have evidence or have reason to believe that there is something happening on the property that could be a violation of the ordinance, then we would kindly ask Sheriff's Department to help escort us through the property so that we can get the information we need to make sure that there are no violations present. Pollution prevention for land disturbing activities, this is our construction stormwater permitting. I want to point out one sentence that I worked with Dave Schilling on, on this to make sure that I'm addressing everyone's concerns and making sure our sensitive areas are protected. Is under the General's Pollution Prevention Regulations, we have land disturbance on sites containing sensitive areas or near sensitive areas. For example, areas sloped greater than 12% may require redundant erosion control measures or engineered erosion control design. This is going to be specific for each permit we review. It's definitely site-specific, but the, anyone applying for a permit or designing a stormwater plan in the county needs to know that we're going to be looking at what we are calling sensitive areas, as defined in the ordinance, which includes steep slopes. And we may, depending on the site and the conditions, require just more detailed design, engineered design if necessary, depending on the site. Large sites require compliance with the Indiana Construction Stormwater General Permit. That is our local requirement. Those larger sites have more rigorous planning requirements, a stormwater pollution prevention plan that meets the state requirements, as well as a self-monitoring program. So you'll find the details of the self-monitoring program in the ordinance itself. That's something that we work with contractors to teach them how to do it, to enforce if they don't do it properly. But basically, that just means that whenever we enter a construction site, we know things aren't going to be perfect. We know every week, things change, conditions are very variable. So they need to be, have eyes on their practices where your stormwater is leaving their site and document the things that they're doing regularly to make sure that they're following their stormwater plan and adapting as necessary. Because we can't be out there every week. We have additional details and standards on how to design construction stormwater BNP's, what needs to be included in your stormwater pollution prevention plan. All of that is found in the Technical Standards Manual. Most folks in the general public won't need to dive into that manual, so our local engineers are already familiar with it and know what to look for. The next section is pollution prevention for silvicultural activities. So this is something that is housed under the Planning Department currently. We're putting it into our stormwater regulations because the state is treating it as a non-point source pollution. They have taken the, I guess, if the EPA isn't going to require them to regulate it, they're not regulating it. But it's up to local governments to see if it's a big enough issue in our area that we can, we can regulate it, we can be more stringent than the state. So I think this is a great compromise. Honestly, I'm hoping to have this be a pretty seamless transition from the Planning Department to the stormwater program, where the logging permit process is going to remain virtually the same, very similar to how it currently operates. But I want to discuss, I guess, my take on it and what we're trying to do. So one of the main issues I've seen is that logging can occur with intent for development. And that becomes an issue when there's no planning involved. There's no oversight on the transition from the logging operations to mass grading for a development or putting in building pads. That's something that's kind of been loose, and the state doesn't have a great solution for us. Usually, when they find things like that, a property has been logged, and all of a sudden, they have plans to develop it, it's usually after the fact. We find out too late. So my goal is to get ahead of things and say, are you logging this property with the intent for development? We need to look at this a little bit differently to make sure that your plans are going to comply with our regulations to hopefully save them money in the long run so that we don't have to go backwards and, you know, plan after the fact. So I'm seeing the logging operations in two different ways, intent for development or just commercial timber harvesting activities. So the commercial timber harvesting activities will require logging permit, as usual. The, we've incorporated this BNP Field Guide, and we have the ability to enter sites if there's evidence of non-compliance, do a final walkthrough inspection to make sure they've closed out the logging operation properly and everything is stabilized. And we'll be withholding the right-of-way bond for that drive entrance until we're satisfied and everything is properly stabilized. Again, it's not very different from what we've currently been doing, but taking it under the stormwater regulations gives us the ability to, I guess, look at the erosion and sediment controls to ensure that they're adequate and that the water resources on their operation are protected. If they're logging with the intent for development, then we'll just have them apply for a regular stormwater permit. And depending on the scope of the operation, we may work with them just to require the level of planning at that phase. As much information as we can get, basically. And may or may not apply for that state coverage permit if it is necessary at that point. So hopefully, that'll avoid any after-the-fact permitting, I'm hoping. DNR has also reviewed this chapter of the ordinance, and they didn't have any further comments on it. They're also providing our staff with a training in the fall, taking us through a timber harvesting activity and talking about the BNP's and what they normally look for on logging sites. So, yeah. So looking forward to taking this on and working with our local loggers, but of course, also open to feedback from them on what will work for everyone. All right, next chapter, Stormwater Quantity and Quality. This is, gets into drainage code and water quality measures for development. This is pretty standard, required by the state for providing detention for any new development, redevelopment, or new construction in the county. Filling in floodplains, sinkholes, ponds, quarries, wetlands is prohibited, subject to Drainage Board approval. That's in our current Chapter 761, and that's how we've been operating. I'll get into the sinkholes in a minute. We're requiring additional BNP's on sites for not only filtering pollutants, but also minimizing bank erosion downstream. And then, of course, Technical Standards Manual houses how to design these when they're required, all the different practices and considerations for them. Best management practices are permanent, and maintenance is enforceable. So this is our long-term inspection program, looking at all the BNP's in the county and, you know, five, 10 years later, making sure they're all functioning properly. I know it's a concern for many homeowners around developments, new developments, making sure that we're keeping eyes on those ponds so that in case we have a large flood event, they're going to be properly protected as designed. So that's all in there. Drainage easements, how to design and new drainage easements, sizing when they're appropriate, what you can and cannot do with a new drainage easement. So they should be clear of obstructions. You cannot, you know, put structures on top of existing storm pipes and things to make sure that all the infrastructure is working properly. You're not backing water up onto upstream neighbors, et cetera. CARST and sinkhole management. This is different for the stormwater ordinance. This is all currently housed in Chapter 829, the Planning Department Ordinance. We're taking some of the water quality and stormwater provisions from that and putting it in Chapter 761. So there'll be a complimentary ordinance or ordinance language in the Planning Department's ordinance when they pass their new development ordinance. Any disturbance within a sinkhole or CARST conservancy area is going to require a stormwater permit so we can track when sinkholes are modified and be able to determine if any modification is allowed or not. Typically, I would only allow sinkholes to be filled or plugged if it poses a significant safety hazard. We've had sinkholes open up on edges of the roadway, edges of parking lots, public trails, HOA common areas, like, things like that, where the public is going to be walking, kids playing, and we want to make sure everyone's safe. So we request a CARST evaluation from a licensed professional geologist or engineer familiar with CARST to help determine proper mitigation strategies. We've had local geologists and folks from the caving groups review this part of the ordinance as well, and they provided feedback that I've incorporated. So I thank them for taking the time and care to look at our regulations. Let's see, we have, well, a couple of changes with sinkhole conservancy areas. Changed it to a CARST conservancy area, which would better encompass the different CARST features we find other than sinkholes. We also have springs, caves, swallow holes, et cetera. So being able to encompass all those in CARST conservancy areas, I think, is clear to the public so that we don't have something called a sinkhole area on top of a spring. And also, the Drainage Board discussed this in depth, how to regulate CARST for the best protection of the resources for groundwater quality. And as I said, I have two licensed professional geologists on the Drainage Board who are very involved locally, local geology. And we wanted a new way to define this, you know, sinkhole conservancy or CARST conservancy areas. Right now, we do 25 feet from the largest closed contour. Research that they've found suggested, you know, 100 feet would be best. That's not feasible, you know, because we understand that people need to use their land. So we landed on 50 feet. But at the same time, we're also in the process of what we're doing is delineating watersheds to sinkholes. So we're trying to not just put a circle over a sinkhole and say that's the best protection, but maybe we don't need so much of an easement on one side of the sinkhole, but the upstream area needs more protection because that's, any land disturbance there is going to drain to the sinkhole. So we're delineating drainage areas to sinkholes and working with the Planning Department on a CARST overlay layer that then our local engineers and surveyors can use so that they don't have to do it themselves. So anyway, that's something that I'm going to be working with the Drainage Board on. And so there's language in this chapter to begin, to make that apply. So if the drainage area is delineated, then that would apply in the delineation of the CARST conservancy area. And then we have policy for emergence of new CARST features. It happens more often than I'd like, but if there's land disturbance in the county, construction sites, sinkholes will emerge. And so we have formal policy for what needs to happen if someone uncovers a new sinkhole, and it is enforceable. So if they find a sinkhole on the site and they don't properly notify us or mitigate for it in an approved manner, then we can enforce. I hope this creates better communication with our people on the ground so that they know who to contact if they find a new sinkhole so that we can keep track of everything. Okay. If at any point you want to ask a question, I'm open to it. I know it's a lot of information. Okay. We have a new stormwater permit. Currently, all permits are issued through the Planning Department for land disturbing activities, or at least tied to an ILP, Improvement Location Permit. So this will be a new process for the county where they'll go through the building permit, Health Department, Site Planner View, or PUD, or whatever it is. Typically, once we go through all of that review, at the very end, they'll be issued a grading permit. Instead of that grading permit at the very end being issued, it'll be the stormwater permit. And so procedurally, I'm hoping it won't be so different for everyone. But the way it's being administered is, I think, going to be cleaner. It's going to be easier for us to have our own permit and being able to enforce these regulations directly on sites.
Are you still going to call it a grading permit? Or it's going to come under stormwater?
Stormwater permit is going to be the new name for it.
Yeah, might want to, for a while, in the permitting software, listed as both, and then eventually drop the grading, you know?
Okay.
That's a good way to transition for folks who are in the industry and do this all the time. They'll get used to the new name, and then they could probably drop the grading off of there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep. Yes, so the applicability is going to be a little different, though, because we had to define it somewhere. So the Planning Department is still going to have the ability to issue ILPs for land disturbing activities that don't meet these permit requirements. So we're still covered in that sense if they have an enforcement case that we just don't need to be involved in. in. But this will capture the majority of projects in the county. And we're still working out what it will look like for some of the smaller projects. But in general, projects, anything requiring the state coverage, a submittal to the state for their construction project, which is sites one acre or more of land disturbance, those automatically require a stormwater permit locally. We put in a threshold of half an acre or more of land disturbance. This should capture most new single-family residential dwellings, but we included that in there for clarity. The main reason being is that some single-family residential dwellings, they do not properly calculate the total land disturbance for their site. So they say, well, I'm going to put in, you know, 10,000 square feet here, so my project site is about that size. No, you're going to be disturbing probably, you know, half to one acre of land when it comes to utilities, your driveway, your septic system, your stockpiling, all of it. So, and then having eyes on new single-family residential dwellings for the purpose of drainage concerns and making sure that we account for easements, slopes, and other considerations regarding stormwater. Right now, we get tagged in, you know, building permits as, as they come up, that they, someone looks at it and thinks, oh, stormwater, I might want to review this. But this would eliminate that decision-making, I think, where any new single-family residential dwelling will have a review on it and someone will go pretty quickly. Some of them, we might catch some things and be able to have some input, again, hopefully for the protection of the property owners and their neighbors and hopefully to avoid costly issues down the road regarding drainage on their property. Any project requiring detention or water quality treatment BMPs, which would be most new developments, but we have some redevelopment projects or expansion projects that would trigger that detention requirement. So even if they don't disturb an acre, we're still going to be issuing a permit so that we can track those changes and any new stormwater infrastructure or BMPs on their property. Any modifications to a sinkhole or carst feature, and then construction or removal of dams, dams being 10 feet or higher in the county. So we'll have different tiers of permitting, and we've already set it up in OpenGov. So someone who just has a straightforward project, building a new home on a lot that doesn't have a lot of sensitive features or anything we're too concerned about, we're hoping to streamline those quickly and so they don't have to wait on our review so much. So we do have categories built in there, so not every single project is going to go under the same strenuous review. A big development is not the same as a tiny one, and we recognize that, so. All right. So, yes. So our permit requirements, again, we're using OpenGov for our permit, and it's, I think, been really great for communication between departments. We'll be tagged in other departments' reviews, but we'll also be able to tag other departments in our permit reviews. The stormwater permit will be the last thing issued so that the plan is fully in place, everyone is communicating what is going where, and we will give them final permission to start their project. For the larger projects requiring drainage plans, so that's anything requiring BMPs or new stormwater infrastructure, they'll submit a drainage plan and that requires drainage board approval. That's how I've been doing it the past few years, and it's worked out really well. We have a schedule for permit fees, drainage plan review fees, and inspection fees. We have not charged any fees for any stormwater permit or stormwater review in the past. So we've been using all of our staff time to perform plan reviews without charge. So I just gave you a draft fee schedule. We've looked at other counties, we've looked at the Planning Department, and we decided to go with a flat rate based on the type of project. For larger projects, $600 is the flat rate. That is not just the permit fee and SWIP review, it's also, we issue public notices for the state compliance, we do a pre-construction meeting, we do initial erosion and sediment control inspection, and we do a final walkthrough inspection for project closeout. We lumped all that into that flat rate fee of $600 so that, yeah, you're going to get those inspections in the pre-con meeting and everything. The smaller projects, so a single-family residential project, $150 flat rate, and that would be for the plan review and then the initial and final inspections. So much simpler. Larger projects requiring drainage plan reviews, they will be charged on an hourly basis based on our contract. So the ones, the sites that are larger and more complex have longer review times and they're going to be paying more. Some of them range from, you know, two hours, so about $200, to 20-plus hours, and that's going to be a couple thousand dollars. I think that's fairly reasonable for some of those larger sites, so. Yeah. And then inspection fees, don't charge for our regular fees, but if we have to go back to your site to re-inspect something, we're going to charge you for our time, especially if you have to go back multiple times, we're going to keep increasing the price, the fee, because there are some times where we have to keep going back to sites and we don't, I don't want my staff to spend their time doing that. We want compliance, so. Stop work orders as well, if you want us to come back to the site to, to remove that stop work order from your site, you're going to have to pay a fee for us to go through the site and make sure everything is in compliance. Again, this is valuable staff time. I want to make sure that, you know, our staff time is not taken for granted, I guess, so. Closeout procedures are fairly standard. We require an as-built survey at the end of projects. We need to approve those before they're closed out. We work with the Planning Department to work on land use certificate issuance. Again, compliance and enforcement, we can issue stop work orders, notices of violation. This is just a draft from OpenGov. The compliance and enforcement section, gone through in a lot of detail with Dave Schilling. I want to give him a lot of credit for helping me with this. So administratively, we'll be able to handle a lot of issues ourselves. Also, we have in there reference to Chapter 115, Class A violation. And then, any decisions of the MS4 Coordinator or the Drainage Board can be appealed to the Board of Commissioners, so I wanted to make you aware of that as well. Anyone have any questions on the ordinance itself? Again, Dave Schilling, I want to just thank him tremendously for the time he spent with me going through this word for word. And, yeah.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I thank you for what you're doing around the carst. I appreciate the fact that you've expanded that and added in that drainage component. I think that's really, really good. With the addition of 761-4, the pollution prevention for the silviculture activities, are you going to need more staff to take care of that?
I think if we want to do it right, it will require more staff time to, to not just issue permits and then forget about it. If we want to actually follow up and make sure they're doing things properly and, yes, it would be, it's going to be a lot on our staff.
Yeah, I think you're adding more here, is why I bring that up. Then also, when we talk about enforcement, what is, what's the level of fine for noncompliance? And does it increase, or does, is it daily? I mean, what does that look like?
It's per violation per day, and so it will, it will vary. I can't recall the exact table in Chapter 115. Is it $2,000, $500 or $2,000? I will get that answer for you.
But it is, but it is daily. If you don't take care of things, it's, and I think that's important for the public to know.
Yes.
And just kind of a point of curiosity, or, well, I happen to know that CBU used to always have an MPDES permit, and I had been under the impression that they were in charge of most roadway spills. Has that changed, or do they no longer have the permit, or?
Yeah. So City of Bloomington Utilities, they have, they have NPDES permits for their wastewater operations, so their treatment plants and that whole side of it. They also house the MS4 program at CBU, so they have their own stormwater regulations. And so, yes, they have a almost, almost identical ordinance for illicit discharges and development, regulating stormwater in city limits. So this ordinance is only for our MS4 area, which is everything outside of City of Bloomington and Town of Allesville.
I, I think that distinction happened more recently, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I just thought that could get a little complicated there if they're two different entities.
No. Yeah, our, the MS4 boundary, by the state regulations, it's drawn at the municipal boundary, so even if their service area extends outside city limits, their stormwater jurisdiction ends at the city boundary, so.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I, I just want to, kudos to you and the Director of Planning, Ms. Nestor Jellin, for really working really well together and getting, getting through all of this material. And I, and I agree that having the carst requirements, development requirements, and noting the drainage around a carst is so important. So thank you for, for getting that in here. And there's just not a lot of knowledge around it, so, but, but using the knowledge that we do have and the best consultants and the people in the state who know this, that helps. And so we just keep trying to find our way through. Thank you for that.
I would also like to specifically thank the Drainage Board, who I know have put in a huge number of hours, often meeting with other groups to get more information, and they've really been very instrumental in putting this together.
So are, are you ready to bring this to us next week for a regular meeting? Colleagues, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll put this on, you'll put this on the June 5th agenda?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Any other, is that all?
No, I'm sure I'll send something on email.
I will take comments as long as I can, but I am also anticipating text amendments may be necessary just because of the scope of this ordinance and with the Planning Department passing their new development ordinance. They don't have the flood, the new state flood development regulations tied down yet, so we're going to have to make some changes later this year when that's finalized, so.
Yeah, it has to be a living and breathing document, much like what, what the Planning Department is doing with the County Development Ordinance. It is, it is something you are always going to have to amend and revise because climate change changes and conditions change and requirements from the state change or from the federal government change. So, you know, it, it is something that, that happens, and, and I think we talked through a good process for that, and that'll appear in the new version, and, yeah, so I think we're, I think we're good. I think we all appreciate that that happens.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yes, thank you for sitting through that after a long meeting today.
I really appreciate it. And speaking of text amendments, our next item is from Planning, Ms. Nestor Jellin, Regarding Ordinance 2024-24, Changes to Monroe County Zoning, Chapter 814, Regarding Permits and Certificates. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you, and I was glad to be there for Kelsey's presentation. We'll continue to work together and excited to see it move forward. I just have a very simple text amendment for you today, Chapter 814. Basically, what we're adding is some specificity in regards to when we have discretion for approving an improvement location permit. And this is to align with recent case law. This was a recommendation by the Legal Department, so we're just adding this in as a precaution and best practice for moving forward. So this part is just changing to state that it's, any discretion is as necessary to ensure compliance with the provisions of this ordinance, and then it gives an example, an approval condition on relocating a structure to comply with relevant setback provisions. So it sort of positions us to have more guidance as to when we can do a discretionary approval. And I could take any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Mr. Jones?
No, I don't.
Mr. Githens?
No, seems very straightforward.
Yeah. And this was approved by the Plan Commission?
Yes, it was approved by the Plan Commission by a vote of six to zero at their May 21st meeting.
Ah, great. Would you, I would assume you'd also probably like to bring this back next week?
That would be great.
That would be good. Let's get this done.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be lovely. If you could do that, yes, yes, good, okay. We're all, we're all on board. Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for waiting. All right. Next item, Facilities and Fleet. Mr. Kreider?
Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. Recently, the Health Department placed some radon measuring devices at the Justice Building, and the numbers came back higher than the, the action level we're looking for. So we are looking to, actually, this request is to accept the proposal submitted by Vet Environmental Engineering LLC in the amount of $11,311.88 to provide radon measurement, diagnostic testing, and mitigation planning at the Monroe County Justice Building.
Comments or questions? Mr. Githens?
What does mitigation planning actually encompass? Does that include the actual mitigation, or?
No, the mitigation process is separate from this. This is to help put together a plan.
This is something that's important. I'm glad you're staying on top of it.
And this is something we can approve today? Yes? All right. Commissioner Githens, would you make?
Yeah, move approval of the Vet Environmental Engineering, Vet Environment Engineering Environmental Consulting Services for the Justice Building, sorry. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $11,311.88.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. I don't have any questions, it makes sense. And I imagine we're going to see this for other buildings, too, downtown. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium and Nat U-Hill. All those in favor of approving the Vet Environmental Consulting Services for the Justice Building contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
I do have one more thing.
Okay. We're here. It just doesn't stop.
So I've, I've submitted a new contract with Anita, and what this is, the, the ARPA-funded project at the Monroe County Convention Center. Originally, we sent out bids for, requests for bids for the cooling tower and freight elevator. Well, those were together, and the original documents stated that the projects needed to be finished in December. That was good with American Freight Elevator, not good with the cooling tower. The leadership at the Convention Center had a specific timeline, and it was far before December. So we, we actually changed the language on both documents, sent the contract to American Elevator, and they're requesting that their date be moved back from August to January, citing four to five weeks for drawing approval, 12 to 13 weeks to manufacture the equipment. There, there's some lead time with that. I. I spoke with the leadership. They were fine with the January deadline for the freight elevator.
This has already been approved, correct?
The contract's been approved. I need to change the date.
That contract, by being approved, will take us through the end of December, because if you're concerned about the ARPA funding.
Right.
So it's going to be obligated.
Right.
All this is, is a kind of like a Scrivener change in the sense that the dates that was on the original contract for the freight elevators, what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Was incorrect. And that date needs to be, instead of referencing August, now needs to reference January.
January.
Can we just do this next week with it in front of us?
Sure.
I mean, I'm trying to follow, and I've heard three different dates now, and now I'm really confused.
He did use different dates. The issue is, it's August and January, and it's an already approved contract, so it's really just correcting a date error.
I don't have any information.
And the cooling tower?
It's already been done, and that's all, I mean, it's already been approved. Both of these things have already been approved. These have already been approved.
Do you have enough information to make? I don't have enough information to make a motion, so.
I was going to say, do, what date? What date in January?
I would say January 30th, 2025.
January?
31st?
31st, 2025.
I can tell you exactly. January 30th, 2025.
January 30th?
Yes.
Well, I hope I get this right then. I move that we amend our contract with American Elevator for the freight elevator at the Convention Center to change the completion date from August of 2024 to January 30th of 2025.
Second.
Does that work? Okay. All right, we have motion, a second. Any public comment on this item? Anything you want to add? Any questions? Please don't.
I'd rather it be done right than in a hurry.
All right, so no public comment, all in favor of amending the deadline on that ARPA project contract for the freight elevator at the Convention Center? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next time, write it. All right, we're going to do the AviTech MOU last, but we have Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, and we just wanted to have a conversation, appreciate your, to the BEDC folks who are here. I just want to thank you for your patience. The meeting has not gone as usual today, and that's okay. That happens sometimes. So I don't know if you'd like to start, maybe?
Sure. First, I want to thank Tyse and Valerie and Jen for all coming to join us. And as Commissioner Thomas said, this is an unusually long meeting. I can't remember one like this in five years. So we do welcome you here, and we thank you. I'm sure this is about the contract that we turned down last week, but also, we wanted to have a conversation in general. I know it's hard to see over this monitor. We'll give you chairs that rise up. We know we all have a vested interest in the long-term outcome of things here in Monroe County and for its residents. So we, and we've said this multiple times in different venues, we are governing not only for, we're governing for the people that live here now. And we can't base things on who might live here in the future, because we just don't know who that's going to be. But we also know we have to keep a long-term view in mind. That's why with the decisions that we make, we ask ourselves, what's the effect, not only today, but perhaps 50 years from now? And when we talk about things like that, we remember things like PCBs with Westinghouse and things like that, and how that had a long-term impact on our community and what that's meant for different areas. But doing this, of course, requires a degree of nuance. And for that reason, sometimes those things don't get brought into the public discussion, I guess. So we want you to know, we value the work of the BEDC. That's not the issue here. In fact, I misstated things last week. It's not that the county has two memberships in the BEDC. When you include the one at the airport, we have three memberships. So we are not pulling ourselves out of things at all with this. So, but we are deeply concerned about some of the public action, of course, that has been taken by BEDC, including some of the formal editorials and the lobbying at the state legislature, which seems to have been done without input from all the BEDC members. And that's why I bring up the fact that we have three BEDC memberships, because we weren't consulted on that. So we'd like to be talking about how we change that process, how we ensure that we have input from everyone and what that looks like, what the review process is by the BEDC. When I asked Jen Pearl a while back about how things were actually vetted for some stuff that she put in the newspaper, she said it was reviewed by the Board Chair, but not by anybody else. And so it wasn't even the Executive Board that had reviewed certain things. So we want to make sure that we have, we understand what the formal, transparent, replicable review process is. We want to know whether or not we can be involved in some of that and how else to move forward. And that's not only for things that might appear in the newspaper, but also some of the lobbying things that go on. So we also want to make sure that we have reasonable timelines. We felt like with some of the stuff that appeared in the newspaper, that we had a four-hour timeline in which to respond. And sometimes that's just not enough for some of our, because we're in meetings ourselves. As you are, you're all busy people. So we want to, we want to know how to move forward, but we want to know how to move forward in a way that engagement is possible, I guess. Is that fair?
Yeah. Did you want to add anything?
No, I just, I think that a deeper degree of communication would be very valuable.
And I would say that I think it's difficult, because when we see something in the newspaper or if you're at a podium speaking, that the assumption, and you say that you're speaking on behalf of the BEDC, the assumption is that you're reflecting the will of the membership. And that would then require some sort of vote or some sort of process, I think. And, you know, to be accurate, it may be a majority of members agree with this statement, or you just simply submit something as you, rather than as you leading the BEDC. I think just that kind of accuracy would be really useful to have. So I think one of the questions that was posed via email was about the process of how things work and any information that you want to share, and then we can have a discussion about communications and things. And to have a conversation would be great. And I, again, thank you all for being here.
All right. Thanks so much, and thank you for the opportunity to chat today. I know that we appreciate the ongoing partnership that we have with the county. We work on a lot of different fronts together. Really, and I should also introduce, just for folks who are watching, so we have our Board Chair here, who's Tyse Carmichael, and our Vice Chair, Val Pena. And the other officers of our board did want to convey, you know, just that we look forward to having conversations about how we can have positive collaboration. Not everyone was able to be here on short notice, so we appreciate this as kind of a first step. In terms of like our three thoughts moving forward, one is we want to collaborate. That, more than anything, is important. The Commissioners and Council both serve as ex officio members of our Executive Committee, which meets monthly, which is one area where we have ongoing communication. So that's one channel. You're on our board as well. That's another channel that meets regularly throughout the year. We collaborate on initiatives like the Economic Vitality Project. And because the county doesn't have an economic development department, we allocate a large portion of staff time to business retention, expansion, and attraction activities for the county. And we're really proud, actually, of what has happened with that collaboration. It's come to around $750 million in capital expenditures across all of Monroe County since 2020. So collaboration, really, number one. Number two, so the process for navigating diverse viewpoints. We're a public-private partnership with a wide variety of members. It's roughly 100 organizations. And with such a large group, we do have members that periodically fall on opposite sides of BEDC positions. That has happened with private sector partners, government partners, et cetera. So our typical process for shaping positions is to gather information and data from professionals working on a given question. We consult with BEDC officers to shape the position, which we share with our members for any additional comments. This sometimes happens on a condensed timeline based on the public processes of local or state governments. I think probably all of us share a deep desire in having longer timelines, especially with the state legislature, because there's often such a quick turnaround. So we really try to do the best that we can on the timelines that we have. And the thing to really underscore here is that economic development is a team sport. And if any member or partner has concerns, we always welcome the chance to have a conversation, because divergent views can really help us strengthen the work that we do. I wish we could say that we could control the global economy. We can't. And it really is a question of how do you pull the levers that you can to try to, you know, best serve the community that we're in? And that's why we really try to pull, you know, as much from everyone altogether. And then the third is, you know, what guides our decision-making? And it's really the focus on economic development. So, you know, the BEDC works as an economic catalyst for a prosperous and resilient community. And we really focus on diversifying our employment base by growing future-focused jobs. I think, Commissioner Githens, you mentioned that, you know, where are we going in 50 years from now, so that the kids who are five years old right now have a place that they can live and prosper? We want to see wages continue to rise. We know that we've lagged as a community behind the state, and that we really want to build on our community's strengths in enhancing the community's economic vitality. So this is really the North Star that guides our work, which is focused on that long-term prosperity. It's a long game, and it doesn't have easy answers. So some of the thoughts on deepening communication, because we always, we always welcome that. Like the Commissioners, we share the goals that you have. In the short term, our next Executive Committee meeting, because we meet monthly, and the Commissioners have a seat on that committee. The next meeting is Thursday, June 6th, so we're happy to add this to the agenda for a deeper conversation when we have more of our Executive Committee members. I think it would also be really great to talk about, you know, what are some of the things coming down the pipeline? We know that the CDO conversations are ongoing. There's a great presentation just now on stormwater. And I know that the city has also updated their stormwater regulations. So I would actually extend the same invitation that we extended to the city, which is, if there are updates coming out of the county, we are happy to, you know, help push those out further, in your words. You know, so it's like, oh, we're having a public meeting on the updated stormwater regulations. Hey, you know, let's make sure people are aware of that. If you ever want us to co-host something, we're happy to co-host. I think that, you know, as you had mentioned yourselves, so many of these things are so nuanced, that how do we best, you know, spread education about where we're headed and, you know, what are all the things that folks are looking at? So that's another opportunity there. I would also say a third opportunity is, and this is actually a shout-out to the Planning Department, I know they recently updated their website for the CDO, you know, kind of making the landing page more clear for folks who maybe aren't familiar with it. They also had posted the conversion charts. And I actually called Jackie, and I was like, what's, you know, help me understand this, you know? And, you know, is there an executive summary, for example, that you all have that could be like, hey, take a look at this? You know, so that people who maybe aren't familiar or don't regularly participate in Plan Commission meetings, that they can understand it better, too. So I think those are some of the opportunities that I see for deepening collaboration. And then also just knowing, you know, what works for you all. And we can share what works for us, too, but, you know, certain turnaround times. Or do we want to set up like a monthly sit-down just with Commissioners to talk about what's coming up? I think we see a lot of different ways to go after those opportunities. Anything else from the team that's here? Yeah?
Anything else you want to add? At this moment, we'll just kind of keep it open and have our conversation.
I guess part of my goal is that we don't repeat things that have happened. Period. I mean, because it doesn't benefit either of us, you know? So, yeah. I don't know if Tyse or Valerie, if you have things that you want to bring up or chat with us about, or?
Anything to add?
If you could go to the mic.
Get the mic, sorry. I know you're trying to avoid it, but you can't.
But that color looks great on you, so come on, yeah.
What is that about? No, I think, you know, Jen has done a good job kind of talking about where we would like to have that path moving forward. I do think what's really important is, you know, balancing any time, and I can say this as having run the Convention and Visitors Bureau for 20 years. Anytime you try to balance a membership, you try to balance a lot of stakeholders, it is a very difficult job to do. But the connection that I think's important for both the county and the city with this organization is extremely valuable. We know it. We appreciate it, and we respect it. And I think that there will probably be other bumps in the road. But as, if we can develop some, I think maybe of these channels a little bit stronger that Jen represented, it'll make those bumps at least a little less stressful and a little less severe when they do happen. But there is, there are challenges, I think. And as you all have known or been a part of, you know, we have been developing a strategic plan that we are about to finally completely release. We've been working with the membership on it quite a bit. We had a new branding program that we've done. All of those are in the goal and the vein of trying to make Monroe County the most viable community that we can. And knowing that the challenges we have shouldn't be within our own, we're not competitors within, internally within this county. We have enough competitors on the outside, let alone outside of the state. So it is extremely important that we really do try to hone that in. So if you do have concerns, you do have questions, and, you know, and Penny, you had concerns even with the branding, and you brought those to my attention, and I appreciated it. And those, and we worked through, how do we try to balance that out? And I think that that's just, needs to be the continual direction that we work through. So if we can just make this stronger, Angie has been fantastic coming to some of the executive meetings. I think any of you taking turns to come would be great, because I know you can't all be there at the same time. But the more we are able to hear from all of you, I think is going to be the benefit of everybody.
I appreciate what you're saying, because that is, the goal is to create better communication that's going to benefit everybody in this community. And I believe I said this last week, and sorry, I'm repeating myself, but hey, it's been a long day, that, you know, I don't, I would never expect, you know, this body and the BEDC to always be in sync and always be in agreement. But I just think it's important for the public to know that if they're reading something, that it has not been vetted by the Board, it has been vetted by the Executive Committee, it has not even been vetted by the Executive Committee because there hasn't been time, whatever it might be. I don't expect us to agree, but I do expect that kind of communication with the public about where the membership is. And yeah, majority of membership supports X, great. That's, I think that's legit. And I think, you know, and that's probably where most things will fall, because I can't imagine there's going to be unanimity on many things. But hey, if there is, I'd brag about that, too, because that happens sometimes. So I think these are all, you know, really good options, and I knew... So I think these are all, you know, really good options, and I knew, I don't know if you're planning on going next week, but to the...
Either Angie or I will.
Yeah, somebody will. We'll be there in some form or fashion next week, at your meeting, I think it's going to be June. And, you know, continue, continue this conversation. I think, I think there are some good, yeah, I've learned a bit now about the processes, which I think is good. But I think there's also maybe some ways that we can make sure that we're all working together, especially when it comes to putting information out to the public and things like that. You know, that's, that's an important thing.
Yeah, yeah. I think, too, for me, I, I got online and I was looking, I couldn't find the BEDC bylaws at the website. I, I don't know if that's normal, not normal.
Well, it's not, it's not un-normal, but normally, yes, we would. And, and part of that reasoning is, as part of this process that we've been going through with the rebranding and the strategic plan, the next step up is a review of the bylaws, which should periodically be done, probably about every five years. We're in about a vein of that, probably a little longer than that, since we've actually sat down with them. And at that point in time, then yes, they would be put up as they would any other types of articles that help to give the definition of the organization and what it is.
So when the bylaws or things like that are done for the organization, is it a matter of the executive committee or board members as a whole to vote on those kinds of changes?
Yep. So depending on the type of decision that's there, you know, a great example is our budget. That comes from staff to officers to executive committee, then to the full board. If we do a membership increase, same thing. I would anticipate a similar process for bylaws updates.
So majority, majority, majority. It's always majority of...
Yeah, in, in a case like that, because that is like the organizational meat.
Yeah.
For, you know, broader things, you know, if it's a position on things or things like that, you wouldn't necessarily go to a board vote, but you would be gathering input. Certainly, if you have ideas on those processes, you know, especially as I'm sure you're liaisons to other organizations, you know, what are some of the things that you've seen out there, you know, that ideas that you might have? Also, Commissioner Githens, you mentioned our website, which we recently relaunched. And there's a lot of great data and information about the county and employment sites for the county. We welcome feedback on things like that as well, because we're trying to position the community in the best light. And anybody watching at home, it's BloomingtonEDC.com.
With Monroe County in parentheses. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think, I think there could be, and this is something, y'all can talk about it at future meetings, I just think there could be some additional collaboration or work, especially on general positions with the whole, with your whole membership. Because, as was mentioned, everybody's not going to agree on everything, but hearing other views and other perspectives is so important to, and it'll help strengthen a message, because you're going to think of things, you're going, you know, you're going to hear things that you need to address before you even put out your position statement. But I just think it's, because what else is board membership for, right? Except to try to not just deal with the budget or the bylaws, but to actually have an impact, even if it's advisory, you know, that's important for a member to have, I think. That, but that's me, and it may be that the entirety of the BEDC executive committee officers do not agree, and it won't happen, but it just seems like there could be more done with that, but...
Oh, actually, on that note, and this is going to be reflected in our strategic plan, we are looking to expand our committee structure. So that would be starting with essentially sites and business retention, expansion, attraction activities. I think Commissioner Thomas, to your point, we, we're actually very, very lucky that we have a wonderful membership with a lot of expertise in a lot of areas. And we realized, hey, we can be leveraging that far more than we have been. And so I think with the extended committee structure that we're starting to move towards, I think that's an opportunity as well.
Well, I just think that it's important to recognize that we actually have two different missions. And ours is considerably more broad than yours is. You look at economic development, and you see that is clearly, and it makes sense, that you look at it as the, of the greatest concern to the community. But not everyone in the community feels the same way. And so we kind of have to take into account different attitudes towards economic development and be aware of what, what that development, what effect that has on people who are living here right now.
And I, actually, you've touched on something I think that's really important, which is economic development as a field has evolved greatly in the recent decades. I think this was reflected in the Economic Vitality Project. You know, we focus on employment, wages, you know, sites for where people live and work. But it also includes things like quality of life, you know, what is your education system, like childcare, which I know we've talked a lot about, quality of place, beautification, public safety, diversity of the community. And so Commissioner Jones, I think, in, in touching on how there is a variety of things that really lends to economic vitality in a community, that can help enrich the conversation as well, you know, because it's, you can create a job, but if people can't connect to the job, or they can't raise their wages, or they can't build a great lives for themselves in the community, then we're falling short altogether.
I just want to ask a general question, because the BDCs have been involved in having conversations about housing. Is there any way you can help us get a handle on vacancy rates in apartments across the county, whether it be in the city, outside the city? It doesn't have to be by complex, but that's probably the easiest way to do it. But we cannot get this data from anyone, although apparently there's a geologist at IU who's figured out some way to get this data, and I need to figure out how that happened. But we're trying to get this dashboard going. And that is a huge missing piece. And we just are unable to get that information, and would really appreciate anything that could be done to help us get that.
You were saying vacancy rates specifically for apartments. It's a little outside of our bailiwick, but a number of our partners may have, like, I have a couple of partners that I could think we could ask about that. I know, for example, the Bloomington Board of Realtors works with the Indiana Association of Realtors, which has research across the state. That's one. There's the Monroe County Apartment Association, I'm not sure the extent to which they would have data.
They, they were not.
Yeah.
And what they'll share.
Yeah. So I think, you know, BBOR is my first thought, but we can certainly brainstorm further.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's, I know that it's not directly what you're doing, but you, you know...
We're trying to get a full picture.
Yeah, but you understand what we're trying to do in the planning department is, the planning department is trying to put together a dashboard so we know how many paired patio homes are there, how many apartments are there that are vacant, how many, you know, two-year-old houses in the 200 to 500,000 dollar range are available, you know? We're trying to figure out that kind of basic information so we can understand the gaps in the housing market, if there are any, what they are, where are they, what price range, what size, you know, that kind of thing. And because, you know, we get development requests and planning requests all the time, well, not so much now without any SURE, but we get requests and, you know, oh, we, we need this apartment. Okay, we buy that, because that's what they tell us, but it, that it just happens to be what they're good at building our apartments. And then we ended up getting apartments that we didn't really need apartments. So we need to know what, what we need. And that's a, a piece of the puzzle that we've not been able to get a good handle on consistently, and I think the community should know this. It's not just for planning purposes, but I think it would help the community, and I think it would help you as BDC, I think it would help the chamber, I think it would help anyone to understand, these are our, you know, vacancy, there's, you know, over 500 homes on the market right now in Monroe County. We should know that. What's in the pipeline? Town homes are getting built, this, this condo complex will be done in two years, and it'll have, you know, 100 units, whatever it might be. And it includes the city and Elletsville and outside of those two entities, so that we all know what's coming down the pike and what we're going to need in the future. And we can address those needs, because they always take years to develop. So we can be ahead of the curve a little bit, instead of just reacting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I, I just, I guess I feel that, that there's also, there's a symbiosis, I guess, in terms of, yes, economic development provides a strength in our community, but we also, we need to collaborate, because the county is the one that builds the roads. We're the ones that do the inspection for different things. We make sure that you don't build in a floodplain, those kinds of things. Yeah, we provide the snowplows and things like that. So I think that, that we, we need to acknowledge and build on the fact that we provide things for each other in certain ways. You know, and we've been, we've been doing things like some of the ARPA money for childcare and those kinds of things, which hopefully helps with employment and drawing people in. And that, you know, it was until we did the Economic Vitality Project that I realized that there was that huge gap in terms of people 21 to 34 settling in this, this area. Well, they're the ones that need probably the childcare to bring it in. And so I think that we, we also need to help others understand that we are not adversaries, that we are trying to, to support each other in different ways.
Yeah, well, and I, I actually really appreciate a few things about what you just mentioned. One is how we have conversations locally not only impacts our community here, but it also projects elsewhere around the state. You know, so folks, I know that when we look at peer communities, we look at how they work together. We look at how, you know, the things, the way they're setting a vision for the future. I was in South Bend a month ago, and it was fascinating to see what they're doing. We were just talking with partners in Lafayette to be like, hey, maybe we should be doing like fam tours with each other to understand one another's communities. And so growing in the same direction, I think, which I, I think you're hitting on in that symbiosis, is the, the communities that really thrive, I think, are the ones that have that vision together. They lean into what makes them great, and they, they point all of their, you know, their boats in the same way. And then, you know, you also gave a nod, too, to things like infrastructure. I get oddly exciting, excited about things like SURE. People think it's kind of weird, but, I mean, that's like, that's your roadmap for where you're going, right? Just as your roads themselves may be a roadmap for where you're going. So all of those things align together.
I, I think that we, when we were doing some of the things like the internet, the broadband stuff, we probably should have reached out to you all more to say, get your members working on this, too.
Oh, my gosh. Please, honestly, use this as a resource, because in, actually, on the updated website, you can see all of our members that are listed. And if we don't have it in our network, there are partners that do, that you can put a call out to be like, hey, check this out, go to this meeting, people, they're looking for input here, we'd like to have a conversation around this. So it's, it's there to be a resource.
I just brought that up, because, you know, we just went through this broadband challenge, and the more we could get things narrowed down to where we don't have the services that the state thinks we have, we can try to help bring those things here. But that, that's, we're waiting to hear back on that, is that correct? You're, you're the guru on that.
No, this, the state is on its own at this point. We are not going to hear anything. We're going to see that they've auctioned off the provision of services where they think services aren't, but I, but I fear that a lot of things are going to fall through the cracks in terms of low-level service. I will, I will be the litmus test on that with my really poor, poor service. So, yeah, we'll both be.
Well, I'll try to, we'll try to video call you and see.
Yeah. Yeah. I just bring that up, because it affects everybody. I mean, I have to tell people I'm not on camera, because, not because I'm shy, but because I don't have really bad internet at home. And I am a stone's throw from the edge of the city, so it does not matter. But yes, so, yeah, sadly, it's, it's in the state's hands, and the state's chosen to take a path of, of using these federal dollars in a way that's just, it kind of frightens me a little bit, that we're, we're going to get bypassed again. And it's going to be very difficult to figure out what to do to fix that, but, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
Actually, I think you may have just hit on another opportunity as well. You know, we've seen a lot of federal and state investments come down the pipeline, and, you know, lots of funding. And I think the more that we're kind of on the same page in terms of, hey, we are trying to do X as a community, that way, when the applications come out, we're ready, you know, with a plan in place. Because a lot of time, having applied for federal grants and stuff, it's, it's a really long and arduous process. But if you're able to turn around and pull it out of a drawer and be like, this is what we want to do, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, you know, the state should be auctioning, reverse auctioning to internet service providers, the areas where they know there isn't service, and they've already marked, we already have that map. We know where they, they know there isn't sufficient service. But there is this gap in between people in the city and in the county, people in the city and outside the city, people in Elletsville and outside Elletsville, who have been, who are paying for internet service and are not getting the service that they're paying for. And I'm sure businesses are suffering the same thing that residents are suffering. And I, I really think this is something the Indiana Regulatory Commission should be looking at, honestly, because it's false advertising, because we're paying for something we're not getting. But that's my own thing, I'm going to work on it on my own. So, but, but there is that, that gap. And, and there aren't, there are no programs out there for those folks, because if the state is not, this is the one time that we could have gotten funding. The state is not going to recognize that these folks have slow internet below the minimum federal requirement. If the state fails to do anything about it, and we don't know that they haven't, but I fear that they will fail to do something about it, then there is nothing else out there, except the goodwill of the internet service providers to fix what they're not providing, or the stick of the IU, the IURC, Indiana Utilities Regulatory Commission. I fear that that's where we're at. Anyway, anything else? I appreciate the conversation, and I think we should, we should have regular, at least quarterly, conversations, and I think that would be really useful for all of us.
That'd be wonderful. We, I'd be happy to get something on the schedule for like a quarterly.
Yeah, we won't make you wait as long next time, I promise.
I think, I think, too, that we do have an opportunity coming up with things going on at the airport and the outlets.
It's been really exciting to see what's possible out there. The Director, Carlos Laverty, he's been great, their board is great. And we've continued to look at, hey, how do we help you get the infrastructure you need to develop that land so it can be a revenue source, but also it's a major asset that can be leveraged for this community? And so I, I'm really excited to see where that can go.
Be good, especially if you get that terminal done.
Well, and, and I was at one of the public, big public meetings about some of this, and so I, I think that it's something that we can sell as well, as we talk about some of this other stuff. So, yeah, I think there, there are areas that, where we do share a lot. And so maybe that's part of, one of the places to start.
Yeah, that's a lot to build on. Great.
Thank you, thank you all for being here, really appreciate it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll sign in over here, too, so I'll put you down.
All right. We have one more item left, which is the Ivy Tech MOU. Would you make a motion?
Sure. Sure. We have approval of an agreement with Ivy Tech regarding the use of Life Science Center parking lot.
Second.
Move a motion in a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, the most exciting item.
I know, save the best for last.
It's for, for right now. Yeah, this is, this is an agreement I talked, I communicated with Kelly Whitmer, this is with the Ivy Tech Community College Bloomington, the Parks and Rec Board, and the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. There's, the Parks and Rec Board does not have a signature line on it, but I communicated with Kelly, and they have approved this agreement. Really, the, what it does is it allows people who are going to use Cars Farm Greenway to park there. There are like four or five rules that are illustrated on the cover sheet, the overnight parking, you know, you can't use any reserved or designated space, never park on the curbs, you know, basic stuff that'll be, that we have to put on our website. And there's another, some other language that we have to put on our website, and then they let us use it. There's no cost.
Great.
And actually, it's, I, I'm kind of excited about this, because as the person who handles the redevelopment commission, I was part of the process where that Life Science Building was built, and so it's just kind of nice to see it come full circle, where, you know, we built them, and then they're...
Yeah, it's good.
Life Science should be about healthy living, and this, I think, promotes that.
Questions or comments?
Just very pleased that this agreement could be worked out, and thank you to Ivy Tech.
Anything else?
Also, thank you to Ivy Tech, this is huge.
Yeah, it's really big, really helpful. Awesome. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. And seeing none, all those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with Ivy Tech signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. This is the longest meeting in Commissioner history. It is 2:30. Thank you all for your patience. Thank you, TSD. Thank you, cats. Roger.